Okay, welcome everybody. It's 7:04 PM on Tuesday, December 18th, 2018. And I'm calling the Policy Committee meeting to order. I don't have my clerk tonight, so I have to do all of this myself. So, I'll do the roll. I'm here. Mr. Guarino is not here this evening. Mr. Mosher?
I'm here, and it is 6:04, not 7:04.
Oh, you're right. I don't know why I added an hour. It's 6:04. And are you alone, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I am.
All right, fabulous. Thank you. And Ms. Timmons is here?
Yes.
Okay, great. We also have Dottie Oden. We have Susan Porter. We have Assistant Superintendent Donna Fitzpatrick. And we have a guest speaker tonight, Stacy Bellmore of DCYF. But we're gonna go according to our schedule, and we have one thing before her. So, moving right along. The first item on the agenda is Policy 8200 and Policy ACR. So, Policy 8200 is regarding fair and equal employment opportunities. It was last revised in 1987. Back in 2015, we approved a brief statement of nondiscrimination, which is ACR, which is essentially the same exact thing as Policy 8200. So, my recommendation is that we simply rescind Policy 8200 and let AC-R stand. Does anyone have any commentary?
No, I second it.
Oh, okay. I'll move to rescind then. And you've seconded?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman was not able to make it tonight, but he did send me an email with commentary. So, his commentary regarding this policy is that he has some concern that ACR is a statement, not a policy. He would like to say that it is the policy of the school district to uphold and comply with all appropriate state and federal laws. Any other comments? No? All right, then let's move on to voting. On the motion to rescind 8200, fair and equal employment opportunities. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So, we will move that onto the full board. Okay. The next item on our agenda is our child abuse and neglect policy, Policy JLF. And we have Ms. Bellmore here from DCYF. She's the DCYF supervisor. I see that there's a typo on the agenda. It says SCYF. It's DCYF, or Division of Children, Youth, and Families. So, if you look at your packet, you can see that on the child abuse and neglect policy, it was quite outdated. The last time it had been reviewed was 2002. And I understand from discussions with DCYF that our old, our policy as it stands is not fully compliant with a lot of changes that have happened in state law. So, I sat down and looked things up, but it's been about three years since I worked for DCYF, so I am not up to date. So, I asked Ms. Bellmore here to give us a little bit of information. She has a copy of the proposed policy, and I think she has some advice and commentary for us. So, Ms. Timmons?
Madam Chair, in the first paragraph, "Any person having reason to suspect that a child and then go on. Their concerns to..." Shouldn't it read the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Family and Children? Or have that changed? Because when I looked it up, that's what it says.
I don't know. Let's ask Ms. Bellmore.
What was the change you were looking for? For the New Hampshire Division of Children, Youth, and Families?
It's New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. Their concerns to the Division of Families and Children.
No, it is the Division of Children, Youth, and Families.
Okay. So, it is New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. Should we not state that? And then the Division of Children, Youth, and Families?
I don't think that's necessary, no. It would be directly to the Division of Children, Youth, and Families, not to DHHS, if that makes sense.
No, it's because I thought it'd fall under the Department of Health and Human Services.
Then it would fall under the State of New Hampshire as well, and you'd probably have to list a number of different entities?
He's not getting you, Stacy.
Wow.
Oh, and he's not getting Ms. Timmons. Okay, he's getting you. He's not getting Ms. Timmons. Sorry, Ms. Bellmore. Okay.
You could add all those, but I think DCYF falls under DHHS, which falls under New Hampshire State. So, you might, would have to add all of those, I would believe. And I think you're safe in just adding this. That could be something I could further research, but as far as I understand it, the DCYF title is just fine.
Okay.
Okay, one other question.
Ms. Timmons, can you get, move your microphone closer?
Yes.
More.
Can we just verify that? I like that verified.
Sure.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Ms. Bellmore?
Yes.
So, I know that you looked at this, and you had a couple of suggestions or comments for us.
Yeah, I actually just saw this today, and I do think it's a much better written policy than there was before. Some of the discussions I've had, I've done several school meetings with Nashua over the last few months, a lot of things that have come up about they believing the policy was more around how to report. And those are the suggestions I would look at for you all. So, I don't know if you want to touch upon what my understanding of it was and what I think it should say?
Sure.
So, prior, it seemed that most teachers and professionals in your schools thought that their policy was, this was the understanding, that if they believed there was abuse and neglect, they went to a guidance counselor to run that by them, who may or may not pull in an administrator at that point, and then a decision would be made. Is the division is concerned, there shouldn't be a question of, if it's abuse and neglect, the question should be, who's calling? No one should be able to tell another person whether it's abuse or neglect besides DCYF. So, I think that's the confusion you're finding in your policy, is that they're looking for someone to say, oh, it may be abuse and neglect, it may not be. And that's not really a decision that someone at this level should be making. So, I don't know how you reflect that in this, but that's something that should be looked at.
Right. So, the, to fully comply with RSA 169C-29, which is the mandated reporter law, whoever might suspect abuse or neglect has to then call themselves?
It should be, yes. And everyone in the State of New Hampshire is a mandated reporter. So, no one is exempt from that, just because they're in the school setting. I don't, we don't necessarily mind if another person is pulled into the discussion or to help support the call, but the person believing abuse and neglect should be the one to call, and no one should change that person's mind.
Okay. So, functionally, I'm thinking about how our staff go about their day. So, for example, if a staff member who is a teacher, for example, has reason to suspect abuse or neglect, but they're physically teaching their class, is it acceptable for them to quickly get the guidance counselor and have the guidance counselor call or the principal? Or does that teacher have to take time out of the class to call themselves?
I'm not gonna make that decision for you. However, the division would prefer it be the first reporter. And I'm not saying it has to be at that moment. It certainly does not need to disrupt a classroom or any educational setting. We would prefer it come from the first person. However, we know that most schools will pull in a guidance counselor at some point, and that's perfectly acceptable. But again, the discussion should not be, do you believe this is abuse and neglect? The discussion should be, I believe there's abuse and neglect. I need to call.
Okay.
Do you get what I'm saying?
Yep. And then, the other question I had around that is if, for example, more than one staff member believes that there might be abuse and neglect. So, say that there, there's a class where there's a teacher and a para, and they both have reason to suspect, for whatever reason, maybe the child has bruises or something obvious. So, the child is seen by several people during the day, during their normal course of, you know, academic work. Do each of those individuals, should they be making a separate report?
So, that's a harder, that's a harder question to answer. So, there could be discussion around who's gonna report of all those people that know. The example I gave to the teachers' union when I was there was if there's five para professionals in a room, and they all see, they all hear someone disclose something, they can then have a discussion of, I also heard that. Are you gonna make the call? Am I gonna make the call? Now, if it's several teachers throughout the day have seen the same student, and they see a black eye that they believe is suspicious, they can all report, or they can all come together and decide. But I don't know how they would know that each other believe.
Right.
Do you get what I'm saying? So, it can come from both ways. I think if the incident happens, or the disclosure happens with a bunch of people, then you can decide who's gonna call. But there's nothing saying that all those five people can't call.
Okay.
And we don't want to be inundated with calls, but we certainly don't want to neglect calls, which is the bigger concern, right? So, that's what we're, I think, probably more discussing, is those people that aren't making the calls. So, I'd prefer that more people call than not.
Okay. I'm also just thinking about, one second, Ms. Fitzpatrick. When I was working at DCYF, and a teacher was the reporter, it was frequently challenging to get that teacher on the phone, because they have teaching duties. And as a worker, you have your timeline, where you can't necessarily wait for a break.
Right.
So, are we still wanting people to call, who call, to reach out to an administrator or a guidance counselor, so that there's someone who can answer the phone?
If the teacher's the reporter, we're gonna hope that we can eventually get to the reporter. And there's been a push the last couple of years to get the reporter. That reporter shouldn't be evasive after they make the call. They should know they made a call, and they should make themselves available at some point. That's our hope.
Right.
We know it's difficult. But if there's someone that can provide us the follow-up information, then we are certainly able to take that. But that doesn't exempt them from, if there's future proceedings in court or something like that, we would need that first reporter.
Okay. All right. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
I just have a question in terms of if multiple teachers have suspicion, and it turns out that they work, let's say, as a team of teachers, so they talk to each other, and they decide one person's gonna report, and the other people are gonna be listed as possible witnesses. The question is, how does that then interact with the new Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct with the state DOE?
I don't know. I don't know, I'm not familiar with that, so I don't know how that would work.
I think that's one of the concerns here in the district, is if DCYF is saying, if one person reports but lists the other people that are co-reporting, that the people that are co-reporting and don't actually file the report could then be in trouble with the Department of Education.
I don't believe that's the actual understanding. So, I can tell you from our end, if a teacher's calling in, and they're saying there are other people in the room, I'm gonna likely reach out to the first person that made the report, the teacher that was decided. That's gonna give me the most information. There may be follow-up calls with the other people, but I can, the attorneys are gonna call the person with the most information if they need them into court. And I would imagine it's that teacher that decides to make the first call. I think that's something you would need to look at, as far as, as far as the ethics complications. They don't necessarily even have to list the other people that called. They could leave them off. But again, as long as the call gets made, that's where our concern is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, moving forward to the actual structure of our policy. We proposed a very short, three, three-sentence paragraph policy. And then, there is a, I don't know if I gave this to you, Ms. Bellmore. There's a form that the division, that the division, that the district is already having teachers fill out to then mail in, because we have that obligation to send something in writing, which we've attached to this. And basically, it just says, who's reporting, the student, and what the issue is. It's very, very simple. So, my question is, as far as language goes, did you have any specific feedback on changing the language that is in the proposed policy?
I did not see the form, but if it's the same form you were using, I can just bypass that piece.
Yeah, there's no difference. It's been used for...
Thank you.
Well, it was edited back in October slightly, but it's been used since... It was edited back in the fall, but we've been using it since mid-October, I believe. But it's essentially the same form. It was just simplified a little bit.
Yeah, that looks, the form still looks the same, similar, yes. No, I just, I'm just curious as to if, if you are gonna add language about who's reporting and what steps, or if that's in a separate policy.
Yeah, I mean, my, my personal feeling about it is, the policy is, any person has to call. And then the procedure would be something that, you know, admin would talk about with staff about, here's how you do it. But our policy is, if you, I would like our policy to say, any person, if you have reason to suspect, you call.
Agreed.
So, did anyone else have any commentary or thoughts on this?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
I, I'm looking at this, and I think that having it reduced in verbiage, at the way it shows up now for JLF, that it looks very good, but I, I read it and say that, I read it to suspect that a child up to age 18 has been neglected, as John report, their concerns to the divisions of children, youth, and families, in accordance with our RSA, so, 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 so. Any oral report shall be made immediately by telephone and followed within 48 hours. The thing that is in my mind is that suspect. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? Is it necessary to suspect, or should you have a definite, something definite to report, not just a suspect? Because I think that word there, suspect, can possibly open up a can of worms for the, the one who is going to be reporting, or has an idea that may be some impropriety. So, could that word there, suspect, be misconstrued?
Ms. Bellmore?
I would almost prefer the word suspect, and I'll explain why. My job is to investigate abuse and neglect and determine if there is abuse and neglect. That is not anything, so you shouldn't wait till you have knowledge of abuse and neglect. It should be, it should be a suspect. If you think anything is happening, it should be a report. I think all too, all too often, we see people wait to try to get more information, and that's a little bit too late. So, when, I think a suspect is a good word. I'm curious if there was another word we could use, but I would hate to say, I would hate for it to, the language to say, believe abuse and neglect, because I would, that's too late, almost at that point, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does make sense in a way, but, you know, we have a tendency in the state, the way it is now, that it may become a nanny state. And we don't wanna have that happen. But I can, I can live with the suspect, but I can have my own suspicion that it could raise a red flag for the, you know, sometime in the future.
Ms. Bellmore, if someone suspects abuse or neglect, and y'all go out and you talk to the family, what happens if the person who suspected it was, you know, if you can't make a finding? Like, what happens with the, the family? Is there any kind of consequence to them or repercussions as a result of calling in something that turns out to be unfounded?
I'm not completely stirring your questions, so I don't wanna...
So, I guess my question is, if, for example, what Mr. Mosher was alluding to, like, say, a teacher suspects, but then, and calls, as part of our policy, but then you go out and you find, there's a lack of evidence, say, is there any, like, consequence to the reporter or to the family as a result of having an investigation?
Like, no, there's, there's gonna be no necessary repercussion to the reporter, so I'll start there, since it was a two-part question. There are two ways, there are many ways you can call in as well, anonymously, which I wouldn't suggest in this, in this world for people to do. You can do disclosure not allowed, which is often what I suggest educators do, because we won't then go out there and make the first report to the, the family that the school called it in, although families are pretty savvy. And if the child's only been at school for the day, and I had go out that night, likely it's a school report. Or you can call in and give your name. So, there are repercussions to some of those. If we give their name, the, the family's gonna know that it was the school. Although, you shouldn't shy away from doing that, because we're all here to protect children, and it should be known that you're looking out for children. So, I wouldn't be afraid of making a report with your actual name. As far as the family and the way it can close, there are many, many ways it can close, and I'll just name a few of them, because we could go on probably for a long time like this. Incomplete means the family would refuse to work with us. All of these get logged in the system, so, and I'll touch upon that in a second. So, incomplete means the family wouldn't work with us, or we couldn't find them, or something changed in the system that we can't, you know, maybe they moved in with a grandparent, and we didn't need to continue to, to follow that. It can close unfounded, meaning there was no basis for the report. Doesn't mean there's not necessarily a concern, but there was nothing to rise to the level for us to make a next step. The new change that happened over the last year is unfounded with reasonable concerns, essentially meaning our burden of proof doesn't rise to the level of us to move forward, but that gets logged in the system as a higher level, meaning we have serious concerns. We're not necessarily at the point where we can go to court on it, but these are gonna be logged in the system. And then, from there, we can make findings. And there's several different types of findings, and I won't go into all those. And those have repercussions. So, those are involved with us, they could be involved with a community agency. Those are where the people get services. The other new change over the last year is the voluntary services, which I'm sure many people have heard about. And that's actually a really great thing for the community. And that means we can get services to families that we believe need help, that maybe we can't move forward with a finding. Or maybe parents aren't necessarily neglectful, it's just more of they're not able to meet the needs based on community resources and things like that. So, we can put them into that kind of a catchment, and that's a really great option. So, the calls are important. And why they're important, whether we suspect or we believe, is that these get logged no matter what. And now, we can use all priors. So, several years ago, and we went to court, we couldn't use any priors if they were closed. Now, we can go to court and say, we believe this parent is neglectful, based on this current incident. We've also had seven prior calls. And then, when we pull that information up, that will support what we have now. So, that's why the, the calls are definitely important, to get through, whether they get, you know, investigated fully or not, at least they're logged in the system that there's a concern.
Okay.
I have one more thing to ask.
Okay.
When someone has been dispatched to check up on a report, that person that has been dispatched, how well-trained are they to determine that there has been, or has not been, an abuse of some kind, or what they can determine is the needs of the, the family, perhaps?
So, what are our qualifications? Is that what he's essentially asking? Sure. All of our staff at least have a bachelor's level education, if not a master's. So, that's the start. Most of them are in social work, and if you've ever investigated social work school, it's a pretty intense process. So, that's the basis to start. Once they start at DCYF, they spend six months in training. That's full-day trainings for six months, learning how to investigate, working with police, everything from being safe in homes to substance abuse training, full trainings. During that six months, and then for the six months after, they're also required to shadow in the field and really see what the day-to-day work is. Because to be honest, you can't learn everything in a classroom, you have to see the field work. And then, from there, everything is done as a team. So, I don't just send CPSW Smith out into the field to make a decision of whether there's abuse and neglect. It goes through many team players, and that includes supervisors who have a higher level of education and training, our attorneys who work within our offices. We have a LAIDAC in almost every office.
Can you explain that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Licensed alcohol and drug counselor in every office. We have, in Southern, we have two domestic violence program specialists. I have coordinators from community partners in the, in the offices. So, every decision is made as a team, and so there's many players making the decision, and then analyzing the law compared to what we see out in the field.
Let me ask one more, one more question, and I'll let you go.
No problem.
My daughter is a foster parent. And being a foster parent, she had a, a young man who had been a science teacher, and it turned out that he was the problem, that he was the one who was being abusive and destructive and had a problem that apparently somebody at the, the, your main office there did not see or could not evaluate. And finally, he had to be taken away and put into a separate home. Is there some way that you can determine the mental state of a, of a child or young adult that, that they may be causing a problem in the house, and not the house causing the problem with the child?
So, you're getting to a different area. This is called chins and delinquency through juvenile justice. So, it's kind of hard for me to answer that, because I don't work directly in that division. So, if a child is the one to blame, it's generally gonna go into that catchment area and not in mine. However, sometimes, when we remove children at a younger age, the removal is traumatic, and that can cause some behaviors. We can't, we can't neglect that. And so, we hope that the services that are provided in the homes and in the community will help negate that. But unfortunately, behaviors might arise later, that they do fall into that catchment area of delinquent and chins-like behavior, which is essentially mental health. So, I would love to have a plethora of resources in New Hampshire, and I'm sure you all would as well. And they're just as much lacking for education as they are for community-based services. So, if I had a magic wand, I would be able to evaluate every child that comes into my, my program or any program as far as DCYF is concerned. The reality is, there are many wait lists and timeframes that we just, we can't even override that system. That's not even a system we control. So, I know that doesn't specifically answer your question, but, and I think that's the best answer I can give.
Close enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Thank you, Ms. Bellmore.
No problem.
So, as we move forward, again, Mr. Kaufman has sent me his thoughts on this one. Mr. Kaufman would like us to know that he feels the third paragraph is unnecessary. It's quoting the law. We have many times acted to take the language of the law out of policy. So, looking at the third paragraph, it reads, "Anyone who makes a report or suspected abuse or neglect in good faith is immune from any liability, civil or criminal. The good faith of the reporter is presumed. Reporters may be asked to provide testimony in judicial proceedings." And he's right. I did, I took that verbatim from 169C-31. So, does anyone feel like we should not have that in there?
All right, say, leave it in.
I do, too.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, I would be looking for a motion either to amend this or accept it as is and move it forward.
Don't move.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Mosher's making the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Any further commentary? No? Okay, then. On the motion to move the Policy JLF, as it's written, onto the main board, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. And then, regarding Policy JLF-R, which has been attached for reference, that is our current form that we're using, I'm looking for a motion to approve that one as well.
Don't move.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Discussion? All right, then, we'll take the roll. On the motion to accept JLF-R as presented, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. All right. Great. Does anyone have anything else on this topic? No? All right, great. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Bellmore, for coming out here on a late evening. I know your days are long. If you have any other information for us, please feel free to reach out at any time. And I appreciate all the work you're doing with our teachers and staff, educating them on this topic. Have a good evening. You guys could just bear with me for a second? I'm supposed to be writing down all the motions? Okay. So, the next item on our agenda is a proposed change to policy, it's, the proposal is to rescind Policy 22... No. The policy is to update 2230, give it a letter, which is ILAB. The policy is to update 2230, give it a letter, which is ILAB. So yeah, we would rescind it. And the main changes to ILAB that are proposed is to change the current policy of homogeneous grouping to flexible grouping of students for instructional purposes. I believe we have a number of teachers and staff in the audience today who may want to have commentary on this. I don't have it on the agenda, but I'm happy to entertain comments. I did put a sign-up sheet. So have people signed up? All right, great. Oh, thank you, Ms. Timmons. I'm just going to take it in order. Oh, that's my fancy pen, too. I got to remember to get it back.
You can get that later.
Okay, we have a number of people here who would like to speak. First is Mr. Atwell, principal of Elm Street Middle School. Which you didn't write down. I think you guys are testing me.
Sorry. You passed.
I'm not going to pass with all of them. That's mean.
So, thank you. I just quickly want to share something from a book called This We Believe that's published by the Association for Middle Level Education. So I just want to read a paragraph from the section on organizational structures foster purposeful learning and meaningful relationships. So I'm on page 32 for anybody who's following along at home. So research indicates the many limiting and negative effects of academic tracking, decreases in student motivation and self-esteem, unequal learning opportunities, and declines in the overall quality of education. In its place, successful middle-grade schools use cooperative learning groups, independent study, enrichment programs, and other practices to respond to the variety of student competencies, interests, and abilities, and meet the needs of advanced learners. In exemplary middle-level schools, teachers who work together on a team design and operate much of the program, collaborating across teaching specialties and sharing responsibility for literacy development, advocacy, and student life. They take advantage of opportunities to vary the use of time, space, staff, and grouping arrangements to achieve success for every student. So I would just welcome this discussion, support this change to allow us to make sure that we're being equitable with the resources we have, doing the best that we can to meet the needs of all of our students, and I think on some level, this will help us kind of equalize class size, because I know sometimes we have foundations classes who may be smaller class size, maybe 10 students, and we have an honors class who may be packed with 31. If we're able to group those students more flexibly, that certainly feels more equitable to me.
Thank you, Mr. Atwell. Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Thank you. So in flexible grouping, when you have, for example, a math class, how does one manage to meet the needs of all of the students on various levels? I can see how that could be done perhaps in an ELA class or even a social studies class, although I think it's a lot of work for the teachers, but math and language, I'm having trouble understanding how that works functionally.
So I certainly, I think there are going to be some courses, particularly some of the classes that we're offering at the middle school that are high school credit-bearing classes, where that may not be the best opportunity or the first opportunity that we want to pursue. I think, you know, for example, an algebra class or a geometry class, obviously there are set criteria that the students need to meet to be successful in that class. As opposed to a general sixth-grade math class, we should be able to differentiate and meet the needs of a wide range of skills in that class. So I think it's going to have to be those discussions, and I think there are some of those classes, a French or a Spanish class, that are earning a high school credit that may not be the most appropriate for a heterogeneous group. There's certain skills and competencies that students are going to have to have coming into that to be successful, and I imagine that some of the teachers that are here will kind of speak to some of those challenges that they perceive as things that we'll need to address. But again, that was kind of why I shared the section that I did, because it's going to have to be a collaboration, and I think this is a policy change that then allows us in good faith to have some of those conversations and look for those appropriate opportunities where we're able to do that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Atwell.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Hoffman, who is a teacher at Fairgrounds Middle School. I'm sorry, Mr. Hoffman, I forgot what subject you teach.
I teach social studies. 38 Perham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, Unit D, Gary Hoffman. I do rise in opposition to this proposal, not because I disagree with the premise of flexible grouping. I think it can work, and James Graham's teacher leader presentation shows how it can work, but the way this is written is not, is not that, we'll just say. The way this is written reminds me of my personal experience with flexible grouping. I grew up in a small town of Massachusetts that's already sort of homogeneously grouped based on housing policy, a town called Ipswich. And according to the Brookings Institute, the flexible grouping, these sorts of discussions kind of peaked in the early 1990s. That's when I went to middle school, by the way. I was actually leveled in fourth and fifth grade, I know it's hard to believe that, for math and reading. I was, me being a nerd, I was tapped as in the higher group, I guess. When I went to middle school, they moved the shift to flexible grouping, and the net effect of that was, I was put in a class that was heterogenously grouped, but they put us in small groups, flexible groups. Because the teachers, you know, they tried their best, but me being a high achiever and some of the other kids, we were typically, they didn't have time for us. We spent, I spent the next three years into doing independent learning mostly, and then my parents sent me to Catholic school. And I know parents where if this change is adopted, they're going to go to the charter schools. They've already told me. I can guarantee that, and if you don't believe me, you can look at Nashville Schools Back on Top, and they're talking about this. Now, I believe those teachers, when they tried to do this, really tried their best. But as James Delisle said in an interesting Education Week article that got a lot of attention, "You'll hear a lot of people say, 'Let's differentiate instruction.'" But this type of differentiation, he says, is a recipe for disaster. Having an admixture of students with varying abilities in one classroom causes even the most experienced and conscientious teachers to flinch as they know the task of reaching each, achieve each child is an impossible one. Furthermore, if we were to adopt this policy, it would take a tremendous amount of training, it would take a lot of, a humongous shift, and we would be spending a lot of our professional time working on something that personally I don't believe is going to work, but if we're going to do it, it's going to take a lot of training. There's an opportunity cost to that. Instead of doing this, we need to do what teachers have been asking for us to do at the middle school level for years, creating a real accountability system, an academic one, at our middle school level, so the kids do not fail every single subject and move on and on. That's where we need to be spending our time, not on this. We need to have, we have some issues with discipline. And I have to tell you, most of us found out about this policy yesterday. I had about 15 teachers at Fairgrounds come to me and say, "Oh, my gosh, I can't come to the meeting." I go, "I will speak for you. I will speak for you because this is extremely divisive." And as you know, the climate survey numbers at the middle school, all three of them were extremely low. This isn't going to help it. This isn't where we should be spending our time. This sort of education model can work, but not with interdisciplinary teams. And if you're curious about some, about some good ability grouping models, I would suggest you look at what James Graham did at the high school, but the way this policy is written, that cannot happen. Please, please, we cannot have any more of our upper-middle-class families leaving for the charter schools. We saw it happen with the REACH program when that was cut. I had Suzanne Vale told me that that was one of the reasons she pulled her kid. This is going to accelerate this process. We need those families here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Okay. Next on the list is Cam McGurk, and I apologize, I don't actually know. I should, I recognize your face.
Cam McGurk, 72 Charlotte Street, Nashua. I'm the speech-language pathologist at Penner Chuck.
Yes, sorry.
So, and at Fairgrounds with the Intensive Needs Program. So I'm also the NTU rep at Penner Chuck, but I'm not speaking for the union, I'm speaking for the opinions of faculty members who responded to my request for their opinions on flexible grouping. It is rare that I ever disagree with Gary Hoffman, but on this case, I'm going to. The teachers who responded to my request, many of them told me that they were already using flexible grouping. I know that some of the teams at Penner Chuck get together and as a team decide what version of flexible grouping they should use within their team. But their concern is that people on the committee understand that flexible grouping is not synonymous with heterogeneous grouping. So I disagree because I think Mr. Atwell actually used it as a synonym. Their concern is that people understand, we don't want to replace one restrictive policy, homogeneous grouping, with another restrictive policy. The whole middle school philosophy is about, you determine what instructional groups work best for your students. When it comes to leveling, Gary used personal experience, I'm going to use personal experience. My boys went to Mount Pleasant School before it had a library, a cafeteria, or anything, and they were gifted, I suppose we use that term, and not because I'm a public educator. I wouldn't consider choosing a charter school for my kids because most of our middle-class, well-educated families, just as I had to when my kids were at Mount Pleasant, you, you give your kids what they need. I just don't believe that people are leaving in droves. They leave to go to ASD, and then they come back to us for high school. And in my private practice, I worked with clients at ASD, and I used to say to myself all the time, "If this were a public school, parents would be jumping out of their skin at the terrible physical environment and the lack of accreditation for their teachers." But I'm not criticizing the place, I'm just saying, I don't believe that we lose large groups of people because we either have homogeneous or flexible grouping. But I think the concern of faculty is that we don't want another restrictive, poorly-defined policy to replace what we have now. That, I loved the explanation that Mr. Atwell read, but that's not what we right now have the resources to do. Some of our finest teams make this work, but when you start talking about defining something and it's not well-defined in the policy, you, I think, limit what people can do. You're not making it easier for them to provide appropriate instructional grouping. So the people I heard from like the philosophy of flexible grouping, but they have major concerns. One, that faculty were not approached at all for their opinions, that we found about, that it was on the agenda just recently, and that the board will create another restrictive policy that prevents them from providing appropriate instructional levels. Thank you. And by the way, speech-language pathologists were the original flexible groupers. We have for decades had children with very different levels and needs in the same group.
Thank you very much. The next person on the list is Natalie Leflam, Leflam? Oh, I'm terrible. I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I view this committee as a working committee, and I really appreciate everyone taking time out of their evenings to give us information. It helps us to do better, so, thank you.
Well, my name is Natalie Leflam, and I teach at Fairgrounds Middle School. I'm a seventh-grade math teacher. I've taught in eighth grade, and I've taught in sixth grade as well. In my 32 years of teaching, I've done it both ways. I was in a district that was tracked, not just leveled, but tracked, and we moved to a middle school, and there was a lot of resistance to going to heterogenously grouped classes. And I was one of the resistors, because I'm a math teacher, passionate about math, and I didn't see how it could be done. 20 years after teaching heterogenously, I'm a fan. I've done it both ways. It is by far better for all students to have mixed ability groupings and to have flexible grouping where we can change them all the time. There's a time for homogeneously grouped groups, totally agree. But at the middle level, we should, where we're teaming, the teams and the professionals, the teachers that are closest to the kids should have the ability to make the groups ourselves. Yes, it's more work, but it benefits the kids, and that is the ultimate goal. There's a lot of research out there, and most of the research, quite frankly, is inconclusive about homogeneous groups. Some of the research shows that putting gifted and talented kids in accelerated courses does benefit them greatly. Well, we have that in math. We have an accelerated program for math, so changing to flexible grouping isn't going to change that. Those kids are still going to be able to be accelerated. But it does show that mixed ability groups definitely raises everyone else up in their academics. It works to close the achievement gap. My question to people that are against changing the policy would be, what is the achievement gap in the middle levels between kids in poverty, kids that are not white or not Asian? Is our gap decreasing with leveled groups? I don't think they are. I think it's stagnant, and I don't think it's improving. So let's try something else that many other middle schools have tried and have found great success. Gary mentioned that it's going to take a lot of training. Well, it does, but I'm not a worker that's paid by the hour. I'm a salaried worker. I'm a professional. That's my job. It's my job to be trained in what is good for kids. I'm sorry, that, I just have so many thoughts about this. I want to make sure I get everything. In math, you had asked earlier about how that works in a math class. Well, in seventh grade, everyone learns integers. Everybody learns adding and subtracting rational numbers. So my struggling learners that don't understand that right away, they're going to have an index card that's going to give them the steps, and then instead of adding things like negative 2/12 and, I don't know, 1/8, they're going to use denominators that have 2s and 3s and 4s. It's not difficult to differentiate that, and even now, I would argue that most of us with the three levels have three different tests that we give. Well, I had three different tests in one classroom. That's what you do when you have different groups, whether they're all together or they're not all together. I had many people, and over the years, I've had many people talk to me about their dissatisfaction with homogeneous leveling, and I know that there is a huge group of people at Fairgrounds Middle School that are just wanting to have the ability to be the ones to group their own kids and decide what's best for them. So I think I hit on everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Leflam. Okay. Next is Stephanie Keating Bard from Penner Chuck? No. Fairgrounds.
So I'm on Natalie's team, and we have a little bit of a disagreement about this.
Okay.
So I wasn't prepared to say anything. I wasn't prepared to say anything. I have to say I was really surprised to see this on the policy list tonight. We had a meeting just last week and we agreed that we were going to send out a Google form to all the teachers in the middle school, asking them their thoughts before we did anything. We were going to do a lot more work and then we see this on the agenda. So, I wasn't planning on being here, but here I am. I don't really have any much knowledge of flexible grouping. It sounds like a really good thing if you could arrange your students the way you wanted to. But I don't want flexible grouping to become a synonym for heterogeneous grouping. I think about my students in English class. I think about the kids in my foundation-level class who are English language learners or reading at a first-grade level. And I think about having them in the same class with my honors students who are reading on an 11th-grade level. How, what am I supposed to do with that? They can't, they're not reading the same books. StudySync doesn't heterogenously group. They have a lower-level unit for those students who are not reading at grade level. They scaffold, they have everything, but you can't do it at the same time. So, you know, it makes me really nervous about what it may become because we haven't done the work necessary to make it what we want it to be. And that happens a lot in this district. We put the cart before the horse. And we have to do the work first and then I'll be on board 100%. I work really hard. And by the way, I do have high expectations for my students. And I'll tell you that my students, every year since I've been at Fairgrounds, have had over a year and a half of growth, sometimes two years. And I can prove that. And I don't believe in heterogeneous grouping. So, you know.
Thank you.
It is what it is.
Thank you, Ms. Keating Bard. Can I ask you a question? You mentioned StudySync. Is it possible to have, using StudySync, children in the same classroom doing different levels of things? I know you can between classes, but can you in the same classroom?
Well, some of them, some of the readings are not the same.
Okay.
And so, if you wanted to do a whole group instruction, which sometimes I do do, like for annotating and, you know, discussing the think questions and focusing and all of that, they're not even reading the same thing. So, it's totally different.
So, it's not the same topic on, being demonstrated on multiple levels, it's actually different stories?
Right. You know, and it's an exercise in futility for those, I mean, for those kids who can't read it. You know, it frustrates them that they don't understand the vocabulary, you know? And I do completely different novels with both groups. I work my butt off to make sure everybody gets what they need. But to do that at the same time, in the same classroom, and not expect behaviors is kind of ridiculous, really. So, heterogeneous grouping, we're not ready for that. The gap is too big. This is not 20 years ago. This is, you know, 2018. And we're in inner-city, like it or not.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, so, sorry. And next on my list, oh goodness, is Sue Gudici? Gudici? Okay, say it again. Judasee. Sue Judasee. All right, I'm going to write that down.
Hi, my name is Sue Judasee, 8 Mahogany Drive, Nashua. I'm a 42-year veteran teacher. I just retired from Fairgrounds Middle School in June. Probably Cam is the only other person that remembers this. When I first started teaching in Nashua, we had five levels. Maybe Sue, I don't know, well, elementary's different. Yeah, we had five levels. Then it went down to four levels and now it's at, it's at three, I feel, very manageable levels. I'm a science teacher. But the first thing is, I want a little clarification on protocol and procedure. If this passes this committee, it then goes to the full board? If it doesn't pass this committee, it's like dead in the water?
Yes. So, this committee is a working committee. This is how I'm, I'm structuring it. I don't know what they did in the past, but, so, for me, this is a working committee. We sit down, we talk about it. We decide what kind of language needs to be changed, if it makes sense. And if we feel like it's something that the full board ought to consider, then we'll send it on.
To the full board?
Yep.
Okay. The other thing is, I was part of the very first middle school steering committee. And then for some reason, and I can't remember the reason, it was disbanded. It started as one big unit, then it went to two and one group was doing report cards, the other group was doing how to make the middle school accountable academically, which it's not.
No.
And if you believe it's accountable academically, it's not. You can fail every subject in sixth grade and you will be in seventh grade the following year. Same thing seventh to eighth, same thing eighth to ninth. So, we do not hold these kids, in my opinion, academically accountable. So, in the middle school steering committee, I was really interested and excited that it was reconvened because there's a lot of important things to discuss. I would think flexible grouping versus what the policy now states would be a good chunk of your time in the middle school steering committee. Instead of being fast-tracked to the policy committee, I would have thought a lot of things would have been worked out and fleshed out before it was even brought to this policy committee. So, I was quite surprised by the fact that it was fast-tracked like this. I think it definitely should have been discussed several times in the middle school steering committee. Those middle school teachers put into groups and had certain responsibilities and things that they needed to research and come up with. So, I was a little concerned with that. I also think that we don't do this in Nashua sometimes, and sometimes we do. I think that we need to gather data and, that can quantify, does flexible grouping work better than, you know, homogeneous grouping? And you can't do that if all of a sudden you said, "Done. All right, guys, you're going to do this next year." Right? So, I'm, I have a little bit of a problem with that. I personally, or I personally used to use grouping practices within my three levels. Especially when we did lab work and when we did literacy activities. This is like within my, within my honors group, I had like 28 kids there. There was certainly flexibility there. You really ranked, the kids were ranked from probably what we would call an extension kid right up to a kid that's, you know, really, really off the scales as far as bright is concerned. So, you could definitely flexibly group within each of those groups, within the extensions and within the foundations. Because the foundations come to us pretty low and it's because from elementary school, they come to us and, you know, this is no knock. I would never be an elementary school teacher. But, you know, they are getting to us low and we have to really work with them. And I know within my foundation level, which is our low level, I had a bell activity every day. And Natalie, it was math, okay? And I had a math activity. And many times, it was just simple addition, multiplication, word problems. I could do that with them because they were all at the same level. If I ever tried to do that in my extension class or, God forbid, my foundations class, and I've got to tell you, the way I planned and people that know me know that I am, I practically lived at that school. I was set up and I would plan on Fridays. I could never plan a month in advance. I don't know where my kids are going to be at that particular point. I would plan on Friday because I finished the week and I would plan for the next week. And I would plan for my honors-level classes. I would then plan for my extension-level classes. And then I would then plan for my foundation level or, you know, it didn't make any difference what order it was in. Sometimes we started out doing all the same information and then what happens is, because I had to pace it down and I had to do more activities with the extensions and the foundations than I did with the honors, they obviously started to stream ahead. But I'm thinking photosynthesis. With the honors-level class, we broke up the equation. The kids knew where, you know, when water, you know, when the light, you know, split the water molecule. And I could get into that type of depth. There's no way I could get into that with my foundation level and it depended year to year with my extension level. So, I definitely knew what worked best for them, what did they need. So, I just really think it was so, and I'm not saying easier. I just think it was more appropriate for those kids. Sorry, I'm, got dry mouth here. And if you're going to do that, there might be some roadblocks or some planning you need to think of. You know, how are our special ed kids going to be placed? How are the ELL kids going to be placed? How will the PARRIs be distributed? Because we've only got a limited amount of PARRIs and they're usually in our foundation-level class. So, now if you have foundations in all of your classes, you're going to have to worry about that. We have a pilot-type push-in program. How are you going to, for, from, for some of our special ed kids? How are you going to prepare for that? How are they going to fit in to the scheme of things? So, there is tons of planning that has to go into this. You just can't say, "Yeah, let's do it," and then hip, hip, hooray. So, for instance, Natalie and KB are on the same team. All right? Natalie is gung-ho for this. Maybe KB's a little more skeptical. What happens within teams? Are they going to, you know, it's whoever's stronger? Do they, you know, do the, you know, the arm wrestle? I mean, how do you decide how you're going to do that? That can-
Work it out. We're going to butt wrestle.
I will sell tickets to that, okay? So, so the point is, there are a lot of things that you have to take into consideration. And quite frankly, I think you want this done. I think you want it done quickly. And I don't think that you are going to, at this particular point, put, put the real time in. And I will, and I will tell you, I'm, I'm a product of 12 years of Catholic school, right? And, yeah, it's funny, I know, God bless me. But, but the point is, and I'll give you one story to tell you how things are different with our children today. I cannot sing. I cannot carry a tune. And third and fourth graders were in the choir and we had like the 8:30 mass every Sunday or something. So, I'm up there singing my little heart out because I like to sing, but I can't sing. So, probably, eh, must have been January, Sister John comes up to me in the middle of mass and says, "Sue, why don't you go sit with your parents after communion? You're throwing everybody off." So, there I am, third grader. I go downstairs off of the choir. I go find my parents down in the church. And they're like, "Are you okay? Are you sick?" And I'm like, "No, Sister John just kicked me out of choir." And there was a little bit of silence. And then my father said, "Wow. I thought she would have done that a whole lot sooner." So, that's how parents, you know, treated the kids. And I was like, "Well, I guess so." And I was like, I wasn't crushed. I was like, "Yeah, I'm weak, I can't sing." And a singing lesson would not help. But I mean, I just really think that in this society of everybody gets a trophy, everybody gets a pat on the back, I just really think that we've got to shore up these kids and so that they can be, you know, they can handle things. I mean, you look at them cross-eyed and they're all upset. I mean, you've got to, you know, they've got- And I did it with a sense of humor. And you can ask anybody here, the kids, most of the time, really liked me. And they liked that sense of humor. But they also knew that, you know, the fist was coming down and that, you know, they needed to do what they needed to do. So, I just really feel that we, we need to look at things. And I think the academic accountability in middle school and the behavioral accountability is so, so important. Kids want and thrive on structure. We pretend they don't, but they want it and they want it badly. Okay, I'll shut up. Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't shut up because I have a question.
Okay, talk into your microphone.
Yes, I do have a question. Okay. I do know for a fact that they-
He's still not getting you.
You're not, yes, he is.
Oh, okay, good. He was waving his arm, I don't know.
I do know for a fact, the grades six through eight, they just pass on. I had that experience in my own family. They don't do anything and they just pass on to high school. And then when they get to high school, they have to produce and that's a problem. Secondly, who's in the foundation groups normally? What does it look like?
Well, the foundation kids are the kids that you can look at their, what schools are those, I-Ready schools? See, I'm only out for, you know, six months and I forget all this stuff. Yeah, we look at their I-Ready scores. I think their teachers from sixth grade put, give us input into that.
Okay. And what type of kids are there? I mean, I want to know, are they, not just on the privileged kids, are there the minorities or who are in those particularly groups?
They're across the board, all. I mean, they're white, they're Hispanic. We don't have that large a black population, but they're white and Hispanic, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we have, the other thing you have to take into consideration is we have a deaf population, the, not deaf, but hearing impaired population at Fairgrounds that would need to be, you know, pushed into this as well. Yeah, oh yeah, they do. But I'm just saying, that's another thing you have to consider. So, you know, there's a lot to be wrangled with before this can, you know, I think, before you can implement it.
Thank you, Ms. Judasee.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. You've given us a lot to think about. I also take your point about resilience. And I don't know that that's this policy per se, but certainly something to look at, maybe in some of the steering committees and other things about how do we help our kids learn resilience because it's a useful tool in life and that would be part of, I think, social-emotional learning that, you know, we've got to, to be able to achieve before they become adults. So, Ms. Fitzpatrick, you had asked that we take a look at this idea of flexible grouping. And so, I'm interested to hear from you what prompted this? And I have a bunch of questions about resources and how it will affect current courses, et cetera.
Madam Chair, we may have some speakers that didn't sign in that may want to speak.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak who wasn't on my list? Okay, sure. Mr. Tassini? Principal, interim principal at Pennerchuck, yes?
Correct, yes, thank you. Thanks for recognizing me and giving me an opportunity to speak. As a learner, I enjoy listening and develop thought. Wasn't sure if I'd want to speak this evening and wanted to hear some things. But I thought it was important to recognize a couple of things. Mr. Atwell brought up a document, this we believe, published by the National Middle School Association. And one of the things that they also look at in that document is describing four essential attributes to successful schools that deal with young adolescents. And above and beyond the concept of flexible grouping, homogeneous grouping, heterogeneous grouping, is the notion that our schools should be developmentally responsive. And whether you have a policy that says we are homogeneously grouped or heterogenously grouped, neither is developmentally responsive because both dictate a particular action. They don't allow a level of flexibility of decision-making between teachers, administrators, parents, student support services, whether through special education, ELL, et cetera, to make a most appropriate decision for that particular student or a segment of students, for that matter. I did hear a lot of commentary about flexible grouping not being defined as heterogeneous grouping, which I think is an important distinction to make. It is not. But yet, when I also heard a lot of argument against flexible grouping, the arguments against presumed a level of heterogeneous grouping. I don't think it needs to be examined that way. I can certainly appreciate Mr. Hoffman's sharing his experience and his math, right? Gary, you were, all classes, right? And not feeling challenged. Well, I would argue then that's probably not a great way to have enacted flexible grouping. You know, I think that's an important- You know, I think that's an important distinction. And in terms of fast-tracking, I'm not sure I agree or that notion of fast-tracking. But with the current policy, why put in the research? We're not allowed to go there. We're not going to be able to go there. A shift in the policy allows us to open the research, bring in the training, examine what we can, cannot do. It doesn't mean we have to jump in full bore in September, but it allows for us to be flexible in initiating things. It's like building blocks. It starts with a policy. It starts with a policy and then you build it to be successful in the confines of that policy. I would also like to note, are we happy with our current state of middle school? Are our current policies in terms of ability grouping yielding the successful testing results that we're looking at for students? I hear concern over academic accountability. No doubt, good question. But is our current structure supporting successful students? Does it go beyond that? Is it not a question of academic structure at all? Whether we have flexible groups, heterogeneously grouped, or homogeneously grouped students? Are they still not achieving and is it a different reason? Again, I welcome the thought of change, the thought of bringing about a notion of our middle schools being developmentally responsive, yet challenging. You know, in terms of addressing concerns of parents, and whether, you know, I think as a parent, where I live, my student is a fifth grader, my oldest, and he just started middle school. There's no levels. It's never been a discussion. He doesn't know what they are. Doesn't care. He wants to be challenged. He knows when his work isn't hard enough. He knows when he's doing well because he's being challenged, it's a little tough. I think we can eliminate those kinds of concerns with parents with great teaching. And we have phenomenal teachers at the middle school. There are wonderful people doing great things with their students day in and day out. All right? And I hope we continue to support them in doing that. And if it is needing training, yes, we owe it to them to get them the proper training, address their concerns, you know, and make them feel as confident as they can be walking into that classroom. That's the only way they can be their best. Also, we empower students. We empower not only students, but we empower faculties, we empower administrators to make great local decisions for their kids. Has to be formulated through data to support those things. And I think knowing what data we need to collect is extremely important to support what we're doing. If current, this current state of things, having extension, foundation, honors, is supposed to be yielding certain results, have we measured that lately? Are we getting the results we want out of that leveling? I was a part of the high school shift in leveling when I first started teaching at Nashville High. I believe it was five levels that we had then. When we moved down to the three levels, it was an interesting shift. But I also remember the dialogue that Pat Corbin brought up at the time, which was a shift of mentality in terms of what foundation, extension, and honors meant. And I think we had a very lengthy discussion at the school level, which I believe came up through the board level to get approved, of that little letter that goes next to the course. You have an honors course, there's an H. An extension course, there's an E. There is no F next to a foundation because the mentality was, that is just the base expectation of what we expect every student in the city of Nashua to be able to do and achieve. Not at that level. That is our base expectation. And then we accelerate students from there. Not looking at it and flipping at it as, well, we've got to break it down further because they can't get to where we want them. And I think that's conceptually understood differently for a high school student than it is for a middle school student. Nothing's worse than working with an 11-year-old who already thinks they can achieve because they're always in the foundation class. And that's hard. That's an even harder outlook to overcome to yield results for that student. So, and in terms of the student services, I think there's a great opportunity to talk about maximizing resources. We have a sixth grade, we have two sixth-grade teams at Penachuk right now. We are able to coordinate things so that two six, these two sixth-grade math classes are meeting at the same time. We've identified several students who have particular math needs. We have one math interventionist in the building. She's able to push into two different classes during one period and she's able to reach more students because of that situation. So she's able to help out kids that have math help. That's a concept of flexible grouping that can work. And I think we owe it as a greater discussion, you know, to get this policy moved forward, get some level of change there, and then begin a great dialogue of what looks best and what works best in each one of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tessini. Did I miss any? Oh, yes, Mr. Marku. I'm also looking at the time. This meeting typically ends at 7:30. So we'll have to have a discussion in 10 minutes about what we want to do.
Adam Marku, Ford Jolory Lane, President of the Nashville Teachers Union. I'll be the only one to speak officially on behalf of the union. I think there was surprise from the three middle schools on Monday when this came out in the agenda. And I'm concerned about the surprise. We talked about communication and a discussion. I don't think there's been a clear discussion at the three middle schools that I'm aware of. I'm aware of a lot of things. This is not something that I've heard about until recently. And that piece concerns me, that the middle school teachers have not been brought along in this process. And this is a knee-jerk reaction from the middle school teachers about something that is brand-new to most of them. With that said, the union takes no stance on this matter yet. The reason for that is that I read about it on Monday morning. I have three middle schools with various, this, I'm having a flashback to competency-based grading and it kind of hurts my head to think about it. I need to talk to them, get an understanding of their thoughts. I heard thoughts articulated very clearly on both sides of the argument tonight. But I need to hear from all three schools. One school's not represented tonight. And I think there needs to be more communication and conversation in each of the middle schools about what this looks like, what it actually means. Because what I think it means is nowhere near what I'm hearing it means. But I come from the elementary school, so I have a different, you know, working knowledge of teaching. So I would ask that we bring the middle school people along, whether it's through the steering committee, whether it's through faculty meetings, whether it's through, I don't know. But I think some of the concerns brought up and that will be brought up could be intercepted with more open communication at the three middle schools. Because I have the microphone, if we could have, please, please, a written procedure on what to do when we have abuse and neglect. I sat through Stacy's presentation. For the record, I've known Stacy when she was the caseworker for my kids. So we want, I say we, I will speak for the union again, in black and white, step one is this is what you do. Step two, if there's 17 people, this is what 17 people need to do. I don't think it's clear. I don't want someone's certification in jeopardy because they thought Sally was calling, but Sally and Jim had to call. Something that we can hand on the first day of school to every staff member, this is your expectation, this is how you do it. And then we don't worry about that. The stuff in the packet tonight, the F, I would say they're like FAQs or this is what abuse and neglect look like, or that is, that should go too. We have an unreal ex, we all should know the POPS policies, but has anyone ever looked at how many there are?
There's a lot.
There's a lot.
I've been going through them.
And we need to understand that there are some, honestly, sorry, that are more important than others. And that's a big one. And we all need to know that we're mandated reporters, but we also need someone to help us facilitate how to do that effectively and appropriately. And that's lacking from the policy. So if we could have a procedure, something in writing to help us, that would solve a lot of our problems.
Thank you, Mr. Marku. So I believe, so two things on that. This, wait, that's not it. This great packet from Ms. Bellmore is, it's proprietary, it's their property, the DCYF has it. When I was at DCYF, I used to give these presentations as well. So I think that, I think it's a great idea to have Ms. Bellmore or her staff come in and make sure that everybody is trained on this at some point because it's really important. And I don't know how to make that happen from my seat, but it sounds like some people are getting trained and some aren't and I don't, is it principals who have to request that?
Well, I, we are getting POPS. It's being rolled out through the POPS training that we have. And this is not anything about what's being presented in POPS. I think you have POPS once a year.
Yep.
And it doesn't happen. And then it happens and we, I would like to be able to say, there is a resource for every staff member that if you are in this problem, this is what you should do. Go to guidance, get your principal, fill out the form, send it away, and you've met your obligations under the state law to make sure that child is safe. If we had a clear policy or procedure, procedure-
Procedure, I would say.
Procedure.
Because I don't-
For all 17 schools, then if I transfer from Charlotte to Mount Pleasant, we're doing the same exact thing. I don't think that's always how it happened. Fine, let's find out what's best for now in every, all 17 schools do it.
Okay, thank you. I agree completely with that. I think for a, I want to differentiate between policy and procedure. I don't want our policies to be so specific that people are not following them by accident all the time. Like, do you know, but if we can have a written procedure and a place, I don't know how it works, if there's like an Intranet that the teachers have access to, where perhaps this is posted and also the written guidelines on what to do, which I believe exists. So if we can have that. Okay, so if we can have, once the superintendent approves that, if we can get him to post that along with Ms. Bellmore's presentation, which has all the nice numbers and stuff on it, I think that would be very useful to staff. So I can email the superintendent, I'll take that responsibility and ask him to get on it. And he'll be like, I don't answer to you. No, I'm kidding. I'm sure he will prioritize it because this is about safety.
So do you want to vote to extend for a little bit?
I, yes. It's 7:25. This meeting usually goes till 7:30. Apparently, I was way too ambitious with my agenda this month. So it's really the will of the board, the committee, I should say, if people are willing to stay so that we can finish having this discussion and perhaps table the other matters. Does anyone have thoughts on that, what we would like to do? Mr. Moser?
Yes, I'm all for it. I think that we should take an extra half hour and cover the things. I think that we can wrap it up pretty much.
Okay, thank you. Is that a motion?
Yes.
I second that. Okay. On the motion to extend for half an hour so that we can continue this and wrap things up, Mr. Moser?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so we are going to extend for half an hour. I just want to write that down somewhere. Oh, am I supposed to write down the time of every motion?
No.
Oh, good, because I didn't do that.
No, the time on the motion doesn't matter. The time that we start and-
Start and end.
Okay.
And when we end. And I would like to speak with, about the ILAB.
Okay. Would you like to have Ms. Fitzpatrick give admins reasoning for this request before you speak? Or would you like to speak first, Mr. Moser?
Well, because I agree with some, but I will defer, I will let Ms. Fitzpatrick go first.
Thank you. Thank you. The floor is yours, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. I wanted to address a few things and then specifically the proposal. The first thing I want to address is that the middle school principals and I have been talking about this since I started last July. And they have been doing work with their teachers around the This We Believe publication. And so the idea that it was sprung on people is a little surprising to me. So I just want to put out there that this conversation, and I've had it with teachers as well. There's at least one teacher sitting in the audience that had this conversation with me. And anybody that was willing to discuss it, it was discussed. Having said that, I appreciate people's comments that they felt that it was sprung on them and it is clear that we need to work on communication. Along those lines, we did restart the middle school steering committee to talk about our vision of a middle school student. And we agreed that we needed to get information together from teachers to get their ideas about what their vision of a middle school student was. At that meeting, I told people that this policy was on the agenda. And the reason it's on the policy agenda is varied. Number one, we have teachers that are already using flexible grouping. We are putting teachers in a compromising situation that they are doing flexible grouping, which is contrary to the policy. I don't really want to discipline teachers for doing the right thing for students. So that's one of the reasons the policy is on the agenda. The other reason is because we do recognize that there's things that need to improve and change at the middle school. And the first step is to allow the teachers who are the professionals and the principals who run the buildings to make decisions around how students should be grouped together. Another clarification I want to make is that no one ever said we were getting rid of ability grouping. And it's unfortunate that that was the message that was sent out on a Facebook page because no one ever said we were getting rid of ability groupings. All this policy does is allow teachers to determine what groups are best for their kids. In addition to that, the way our system is currently set up, once you're a foundations kid, it's like being in prison. You can't get parole. You can't get out. Once you're in foundations, you're in foundations forever. There ought to be a mechanism for students to show what they know at the level that they know and not be subject to a level that may not be as challenging to them as it should be. And in addition to that, I have started to collect the data so I can back up what I'm saying. I don't have the data ready to share tonight, but the overwhelming number of students that are in foundations classes are low socioeconomic students and non-white students. In honors level classes, the majority are white students. That's the data. I am not, that's the data. So I think that we really need to look at our changing population in Nashua and start to do some self-examination around our preconceived notions of people. So in particular, my concern is that we are able to start the conversation about what we want our middle schools to be. In that middle school steering committee, because this was presented by one of the speakers, we are going to be looking at holding students accountable. So that's one of the things we're going to be looking at. We're going to be looking at how we grade students. But we all decided as a large group, and some of you were there, that we needed to, as three middle schools, determine what our vision of a Nashua middle school student is. And that until we can, as a whole, determine what our vision of that student is, these other things that, yes, there's a lot of work to do. This is a minimum three-to-five-year plan, minimum. It's not an overnight shift. But to be able to change this policy, to begin to go in the direction that we know is best for kids, shows that the board supports the prof- is best for kids, shows that the board supports the professionals in terms of what we need to do to perform our best work for students. And if we want to keep things the way they are, how can we expect improvement in all of our students? And how can we encourage all of our students to be successful when we're telling eleven and twelve-year-olds, don't bother, you can't do it? And that's what Foundations says, whether we believe that or not, whether we believe that or not. That's how the kids are interpreting it. And I know that we're going to need professional development, but until we are at a position where we can all agree that we're going to move forward in the best interest of students and be able to have those conversations, then it's pretty hard to determine what professional development needs to happen for people to help them move our middle schools forward in the interest of our students. I have a lot more to say, but I'll, uh.
No, I need you to say it.
I do. I, I really need you to be honest. Um, and full disclosure, flexible grouping is not heterogeneous grouping. And so people are sim, they're using terms interchangeably that are different terms. Homogen, homogeneous grouping is honestly what we're currently doing with our leveling system, which is just another word for tracking.
Yeah.
Heterogeneous is where everyone's mixed together and no one has said that that's what we're going to do. Flexible grouping allows the professionals to decide where kids can excel and in what areas and where they need more support. I think Mr. Tussini spoke very well of the way that they have been able to utilize our limited resources, I'm well aware, because they are in education every place. But flexible grouping and being able to schedule that way has allowed them to capitalize on the limited resources that we have. And with flexible grouping, it gives teams of teachers more ability to do the kinds of educational programming that is best for middle-level kids, that keeps them engaged. And as a slight addition to that, one of the things that people have been very, very concerned about is discipline at the middle school. There is a lot of research that will tell you, if students are disengaged and disenfranchised because they believe that they cannot succeed, we get more discipline issues. Kids that are engaged and enthusiastic about learning and believe they can be successful are not going to give the same discipline issues that we are, to a certain extent, experiencing in our middle schools. So there are many, many, many benefits to teaching middle school students in a way that is appropriate for their age, their skills, and their state of mind. Because if we're being honest, middle school students are a different kind of student, which is why I was always drawn to middle school. God bless elementary teachers. But middle school, middle-aged level kids are going through so many things internally that we need to provide the kind of environment where they can all feel success and all feel that they have, they have skin in the game. And I do believe that our current setup has some kids feeling defeated before they even get started. So, and flexible grouping is just the first step. There is a ton of work to do. And now is the time to do it because we're talking about the middle school building projects. And shouldn't how we're going to move forward inform us on the middle school building projects and what that will look like? This policy is the first step in beginning those conversations. And I want to protect the teachers that are doing the right thing for kids. Right now, we have teachers that are working in violation of the policy, and I don't think that's okay for us to be putting them in that position. So I could go on for hours. This is my favorite subject, so I'll stop.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Ms. Timmons, Mr. Moser had some questions. I have some questions I've written down. Hopefully, I'll remember them. Mr. Moser first?
Yes, I was listening to, uh, Ms. Fitzpatrick, and I noticed that she was very redundant in a lot of her, her speech, but, uh.
Making my point.
She did make some points. And I think that some of the points that she made is that we do need to have the, uh, the professional development that is going to, uh, address some of this, uh, thing about the leveling. And from my own experience in teaching and adult education, I had a, a thing with, I'm trying to teach computer electronics, and I had a biker, I had a disc jockey, I had a, a mother who was a single parent, and, uh, they were three different, uh, three different levels right there. And, uh, the one was a little bit concerned, the other one, you know, she had trouble changing a light bulb, but, uh, let alone, uh, you know, getting involved in computer electronics. But, uh, I find in, you know, my time in school, in grade school and in high school, that if you put everybody together in the same class, it tends to slow down the, the entire class. Because, uh, teachers, uh, are not always able to, uh, to differentiate between the students so that they can have a, like a different lesson plan for one than that for the other. Uh, in the high school, we had two, uh, two levels. We had one that was the academic class, which was the bright, uh, young people, and they had the general course, which was sort of people that were not so bright. But, uh, the thing was, what do you determine they'll be the successful? When you talk about success, uh, is it success that you have completed a four-year college, a two-year college, or that you managed to get to your high school diploma? Either one is a matter of success. Success is all in what you believe. And for some, they don't need that four-year degree, or some of them don't even need a two-year degree. With some things, all you need is that high school paper. And sometimes where you have the success, it's determined because they get that high school paper, and then they find out that something has caught their interest and they pursue it and take independent, uh, courses, and, uh, they move right ahead. And in some places, they exceed what the people that, uh, went for the four-year degree, they exceed what they did. So it's a matter of perception. And as such, I, you know, I have to compliment the teachers that we have in, in Nashua here. You know, I think that, uh, many of them are, are superwomen in what they do, superteachers. Uh, I've got some friends that are retired, uh, from the district, and they, they, they did very well. Uh, even working with my wife, who was, uh, involved in the ELL program, uh, as a, uh, an aide. But there's some other things that, uh, that are going on, and I, this policy, as it's written, I could not possibly, uh, support it.
Uh, the, thank you, Mr. Moser.
Any questions? Not enough data.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moser.
Thank you.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes, um, as I was listening to both sides of the coin, I tend to agree somewhat with Mr. Moser. However, I don't want to kill it. Because I think it's also good as well. I think we need more data. I think we need more time. I think we need to have all the teachers on board. Our principals are on board according to you, but the teachers didn't know the principals was on board. We do need the data to back up what you're saying. One of the articles in today's paper said that one of the reasons why Nashville is considered the best city in New Hampshire is because of our education. One of them was because of education. I don't want to see that change. So I don't think we should kill this. I think we should just table it for a while so we can get the information that we need. This is just my opinion. So everybody can be on board with this because you're going to make someone unhappy. You're going to make some people, and I, Gary had a good argument and, uh, Mr. Tussini, uh, the whole bit, I just, I'm confused. I don't want to kill it.
Okay.
I just want to table it until we get more data and more information so we can, I can make a conscious decision instead of saying it's dead in the water.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons.
The argument factors that Mr. Fitzpatrick had, um, that was really revealing and I'm concerned about that. So if we can get that motion just to table it for about thirty days, I would like that so we can get more people on board with this. I don't like surprises.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Timmons. Um, uh, sorry, Ms. Porter?
Okay, I know I'm not, is it all right for me to speak now?
Yes, feel free.
I'm not on this committee. Okay. I think that this needs to be part of a really broad discussion, a comprehensive discussion of middle school. Many of us on this, sitting up here, are on the construction committee, and I think that this is the exact time when we should be having this discussion. If we're designing a new school, it has to be driven by education, not by architects. And the architects are going to be looking for our input, and I think we need to be ready because, um, sitting on the, on that construction committee with the aldermen, you know, there, there's a strong component of price here. And we want to be sure that within the confines of the amount of the bonding that we're going to get, that we have a building that supports our students and supports our education. So I think that in the context of a comprehensive look at middle school, this is an important piece. As an elementary school teacher, this doesn't seem foreign to me, this idea. This is how we teach in elementary school. We are flexible. If anybody is flexible, it's an elementary school teacher. This just makes sense to me. This is how we teach. So I, you know, I'm, I'm for this. I would hate to think that any middle school teacher is against policy and would be reprimanded in any way. I, I mean, there's got to be some way that, you know, I don't know if the appropriate thing is to do is just kind of suspend this for right now. I, I don't know what the, the language is. But I think that our professional teachers, who are trying different things, should be nurtured and encouraged and, and be able to try these things out and to share them with their colleagues. I, I really like the idea of the three middle schools working together as part of the strategic plan committee. I've gone out to many focus groups, and the, the feedback from people at the middle school is that they want to work together. They don't want to be three islands. So I like the idea of administration, principals, teachers, custodians. I was at the custodian focus group, and they have a lot of things to say because they're seeing things from a different perspective. I got some interesting feedback on eBlock, but that's another story. So I think that all of these stakeholders have a part in this, and I wouldn't want to kill it or take it. I mean, we, we got to take it in, in the broader context of what's happening in our schools. So policy-wise, I don't know. Can we just, like, say, I, I don't know what the answer is. But I would hate to, like, have, I'm, I'm vision, I'm picturing coming to a full board and having this discussion in a full board and, and, you know, where is that going to go? We want to make a decision that's going to encourage teachers in their professional capacity to do something that's good for students. I'm not saying that teachers who are leveling are not doing good for students because everybody's trying hard. So there, there's not a, it's not that black and white. So I don't know what we do with this policy.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. I, I see you, Mr. Hoffman. What?
I can't.
Sorry, that meant come up to the microphone. That's non-verbal.
Sue, I.
On, thank you.
Sue, I understand your concern. It's a valid one, and we don't want middle school teachers to get in trouble for our policy. There's an easy solution that we could adopt tonight. Get rid of the cross-strikes and add the word "or." In that way, we could have a longer discussion. We could do this properly. Maybe, you know, after a year or so, you could allow for the experimentation. You could actually see if it works. Because there are schools who are experimenting with this. You would protect the teachers who are already doing it. We would still have the homogeneous grouping for teachers that prefer that. And we could actually spend some time researching this and including all the teachers in the discussions on what's best for kids. That would be my suggestion. It would, it would solve this issue that we're talking about. My big concern, though, is if in a month we just adopt this, well, the teachers who are now leveling according to the bill of board policy will now be in violation, and you will have the same exact problem that you're having now, just with a different group of people. That's the, that's what you should do.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I, I appreciate that. My understanding of flexible grouping, so, little disclosure here. My sister is a middle school teacher. She's been teaching middle school math for ten years. She's taught in bilingual schools in New York. Now she's in Philadelphia. She has a lot of experience with a variety of different populations, both inner-city and now more suburban. And she's done both, flexible grouping and homogeneous grouping. Her current, we had a very long conversation today. Her current school does something interesting, I'm sorry, heterogeneous and homogeneous grouping. Her current school does something interesting where they level students in certain subjects and they group in other subjects. And my understanding of the term flexible grouping is that that would allow for both. So like, in my sister's school, she teaches math and she teaches, you know, she has honors classes and she has other classes. And she finds that as a teacher easier than trying to group within math. But in her school, for English, language, arts, and some other, other classes, there's more heterogeneous style grouping. But they don't call it that. They call it something else. So, you know, it's, it's interesting. My questions on this are more of, if we make this change, it's December. Well, like, are we looking at making the, the policy change so that we can then get resources for PD and for talking about how to implement it? Or do we need to do the talking about it first and then do the policy? Because I'm not sure, do we need the policy change in order to do that work?
In my opinion, the policy change shows that the school board supports the whole process of moving forward with the middle schools. And that if, if the school board can't get behind a policy that flexible grouping is used throughout the country in urban, suburban, and rural schools, it's just the first step in some of the changes that need to move the middle schools forward. So the idea behind this policy is first step. It's not the beginning and the end, it's the first step.
And to Mr. Hoffman's point about the blue type here in the proposed policy where it says, paragraph two, it says, "The components of middle-level education include an emphasis on student-centered program, development of effective learning communities, interdisciplinary planning, block scheduling," and all that is fabulous. And then we've, the proposed change is to cross out leveling of students for instructional purposes and then add flexible grouping. And then finishing the paragraph with establishing small group student-teacher relationships, parents as active partners, accountability, and program evaluation. So I think Mr. Hoffman's point was leave in that strike through part, the leveling of students, and then put "or" flexible grouping. Or leveling. Or, leveling of students, comma, flexible grouping. Would that achieve the same result that administration is looking for? And I'm assuming here that the, that the purpose of the change is to help all students rise and get developmentally what they need, yes?
Yes, and I'm, I understand the reasoning behind putting the word "or" in there, but I think it will frankly cause more divisiveness amongst, amongst the staff, so it will be even harder to move forward.
Okay.
Flexible grouping does cover ability groups. So, people would not be violating the policy if their flexible grouping includes high honors and honors.
Okay. Because that's my other concern about it, is I did a ton of research, and I looked at some meta-analysis of ability grouping versus other forms. And I actually got this really great study from 2016 where they looked at, they looked at grouping in a number of schools over a long time, like from 1980 till now. And what they found was that the homogeneous grouping seems to be best for the top 10% of students, and then a more flexible group seems to be best for the bottom, like 90% of students. And so, I hate to have a policy that is for only some of our students, but not all of them. So, for me, making a change kind of makes sense, but I don't want to lose those 10%. I want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. So, if we were to adopt a flexible grouping policy, can we still serve the needs of those 10% that do best in, like, an honors-level course or taking those high school courses at the, at the middle school level?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's, that's my big roadblock. Mrs. Oden?
Thank you, thank you. And I want to thank all the teachers and administrators who came tonight. I know, I know this is a difficult issue. I know there are people on, on both sides, but I think we have to remember, we're here for kids, and we want to do what's best for kids. And, and everybody has their own idea of what's best for kids at some level. I will say, I think middle school teachers have the toughest job of any teachers. I, I remember, I'm old, and I remember middle school like it was yesterday, so, but I would like to, I'm concerned about the communication, that people just realized this was happening today. So, I just wanted to ask about the middle school steering committee. What, what do they have to, what vehicle do they use to communicate with other middle school teachers? Do they have a meeting that has notes, it's televised, that, that middle school teachers can see what's going on?
Last week was the first reorganizational meeting, so last week was our first meeting. And notes were taken by one of my administrative assistants. I don't think she sent them out yet. So, they haven't been sent out yet. But decisions were made about how to move the group forward, and the main decision was what our vision of a Nashua middle school student is, in order for all the other things under the umbrella to be addressed.
Can I ask, how many, how many middle school teachers are on the committee?
Oh, my gosh. Was there 20?
I don't think there was 20. There's a mixture of core teachers and UA teachers and a librarian and a teacher and educators, but there was maybe 10 of us?
So, from, from the audience, we're hearing that the steering committee is a mixture of teachers of various different disciplines and levels, and that there were less than 20, more than 10?
Yeah. I don't have the list with me, I'm sorry.
At least 12 is what we're hearing from the audience.
I don't know how long the minutes are, but would there be an opportunity to, for the administrators to hand out, have a copy for, at teachers' meetings, staff meetings, so that they, they can read them and see what's going on and have, is there a place for feedback?
Yes. We haven't gotten to that point yet, because, like I said, it was our first meeting, but the plan was to, the people on the committee, because all three schools are represented, we're going to go back to their schools and start asking questions. We have started a Google Doc for the committee in order to have good communication among the committee, to get that information out to teachers.
Okay. Well, thank you, because to me, that's really important. I think that's where competency-based grading at the high school really fell down. There wasn't enough communication. To me, that's so critical, and it bothered me that people were saying they hadn't heard about this. So, I, I think the communication needs to improve, but communication's a two-way street. You can send information out, and if people don't read it or get involved with it, then, you know, it's very difficult. But, I appreciate all of you coming tonight, and thank you for all you do for our students. I admire what you do. Thank you.
Ms. Porter, briefly?
Yeah, one quick question. What is the, the purpose of the committee? What is their mission? Is this a comprehensive view at middle school that's going to be happening through this committee?
Yes.
Okay. So, their stated mission is to look at middle school in all its facets to come up with a five-to-seven-year plan going forward for the district?
Yes, and the main issue right now is the middle school vision of what a Nashua middle school student is.
Okay. Thank you. I'm looking at the time, and it is 8:00. We started like four minutes late, so technically, I guess we have four minutes.
I do have my question from the Fitzpatrick. I would like to know, how long would it take to do the study? I mean, you started it just a week ago?
What, what study?
The, the steering committee.
Yes.
Okay, it started a week ago. So, I would like to know, how long would it take for we, for us to get some feedback so we can start working on the policy, to get something that we can all agree on, almost all agree on?
Okay, thank you for that qualification. Going into the holidays, first of all, it'll be... I'm sorry, I don't want to give an answer that's not accurate. I, I think I've started working with some data, and of course, I work over the holidays, so I'd like to be able to put some of that data together for you to show some of the things that I was talking about. But also, I am open to feedback. I think the best way to do feedback about the policy would be to the principals and then to me, so that I can consolidate those responses in a way that makes sense. And people have the ability to give feedback. I need people to understand that if 50 people say they are in favor of flexible grouping and 10 people say they're not, we'll go with what the majority of the feedback is, and language suggestions that may work for people. But I don't want to develop a policy that is too nebulous or allows for people to do whatever they want.
Yeah.
Could I inject something here?
Briefly, Mr. Moser.
Yes, I just want to remind you that after the first of the year, we will have all-new committee members, and the makeup of the school board is going to be a little bit different. So, we should put that so that it can be brought up again after the first of the year. Because without passing it, by New Year's, it's going to die anyway.
Yep.
So, we can bring it back up again when we have the, the information, the data, et cetera, in January.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. That is an important note. So, I'm looking at the time, it's, it's a little bit after 8:00, and all of the teachers and principals in the audience have to get up and work earlier than me. So, I don't want to keep everybody here. Yeah. But I hear that they just stay on, on working all times. So, I don't want to keep people here any later. It's, it's, it's late. And I don't think we have a resolution right now. So, having said that, I'd like to propose, I'd like to move that we table this until the January policy committee, and that, I know that the policy committee might look different in January, but I'd like to, I move that we table this to the January meeting. And that way, people can have it.
A second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Roll on the motion to table it so it can be heard in the January meeting. Mr. Moser?
No.
No to tabling it?
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a yes, so that's two to one. Mr. Moser, can I ask you, is there, did we do something wrong procedurally?
Uh, no, but I'm concerned that we have to redo the, the proposed policy after the first of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Even if it's tabled, I think it's going to die.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Moser. Hopefully, the new policy makeup will respect our motion.
I'll have to take a look at my, my Robert's Rules and see.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure either, but hopefully, the way we worded it will work. As to the other items on the agenda, we're not, we don't have time for those. So, at this point, I propose that we go ahead and adjourn the meeting, and then hopefully the policy makeup will be respectful next time and, and pick up where we left off, but we'll see.
A second.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, so, roll call on the motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Timmons? Yes, and I'm a yes too, so we are adjourned at 8:05 PM. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.